This is the Bluff Town Council's regular meeting. Today is May sixth, twenty twenty five. Roll the ball.
Linda Sosa.
Luanne Hook.
Brett Hornsby.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
We have approval of this. I don't know. Do you want me?
Go ahead and try it again.
I think you're good.
So we have approval of a special meeting minutes from May first, twenty twenty five. Has everybody read them? Are there any corrections, modifications, points of discussion?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from special meeting twenty, uh, the, what was the date again? So I don't have it in front of me.
May, May first, twenty twenty five.
May first, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor to say aye, aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. This is public comment. There will be a three minute time limit for anyone wishing to make a public comment. If you exceed the three minute time limit without permission, um, meeting controller will mute you. Raise your hand if you're in the audience or in the box on the screen or the hand icon who wish to make a public comment. We'll take people in the audience first. I am going to shift this recorder down there. We do have somebody doing the audio visual stuff, but we have to post this one on our website.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Bob Chigillis. I'm from Reno, Nevada, resident of Reno, Nevada. And I just wanted to say to the community, I'm looking for a small piece of lot, you know, a lot of small lot in town to build a retirement home on. Something in an acre size. I'm not really interested in the copper foot subdivision. I have some little flyers. Is it okay if I put another flyer on the voting board and saw it got cleaned off?
I am going to have you talk with Malia Collins because you're no spurred us to talk about which side of the board we're going to be putting in public notice on.
I did notice it was.
So if you'll talk with Malia afterward, that would be.
Anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself and say I'm looking for a little lot here and I'd like to become part of the community. I want to live here full time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online who wishes to make a public comment?
Um, I've had the chat box open and I don't show that anyone uh, needs to make a comment at this time, so I'll go ahead and close that box off.
Four oh four. So everyone will probably note that the agenda is really long. So in doing this, we've put the budget, the amended twenty twenty five and the tentative twenty twenty six first. If for some reason we get, we're at the end of the, the meeting time and we have items, I'll go through and see what we need to vote on. Because we're meeting again on Tuesday in a work session and we'll probably do an executive session, we might as well throw whatever items we don't get to onto that. But with that in mind, I'm going to turn item number one over to Erin Nelson, the presentation and discussion of the annual fiscal year twenty twenty five budget and the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty six budget.
Okay, so there has been an awful lot of moving parts this year. I would say worse than usual for budget season. Um, some ways good because we have a lot of grants that we're trying to juggle. And in some ways bad because we have some surprise expenses that have been popping up. So let me just get my screen here. So it's not quite as tidy as some other budget presentations that I've given in the past. Um, what I'll do is, you know, we've already talked about this a little bit in April. Um, I will try to give the highlights. I know I usually get a little down into the weeds, so if I'm getting too far down, pull me back up and we'll bring it into the work session. Um, from a high level, I think we're in pretty good shape for this fiscal year. We do have, you know, some community center projects that, you know, we already said that we needed to get done. Um, it's important that, you know, we are maintaining our assets and our facilities. Uh, so I don't, you know, we're not going to not do those types of projects. Um, but from a high level, revenues are looking okay this year. We're, they're pretty much in line with what we'd estimated um, in the approved budget. So folks back in here. Um, so from a tax perspective, I am estimating that we're going to be down just a couple thousand dollars. Um, as Linda sent out, um, about eleven percent decrease in February. Um, there's definitely still time for us to see changes in those revenues by the time we approve this budget in June. Um, so I will keep a close eye on those, but we also know that March, April, May, June are going to be a little bit stronger for revenues and we're already at eighty six percent for tax revenue. So I'm not going to worry about two, the, two, about those too much, but as a reminder for, and I'm just going to do these concurrently because like the this year will lead into next year if you guys are comfortable with that. So we're just going to go down column E and column F kind of at the same time. So for next fiscal year, as indicated in our previous April meeting, we know that there's, there's strong indication that we will see reduced uh, tax revenue in fiscal year twenty twenty six. So for the areas that are closely associated with tourism, I have reduced the budget by approximately twenty five to thirty percent. That overall reduction, um, you know, kind of balancing out between the sales tax, highway municipal, et cetera. Um, this is, this is looking like somewhere between twenty and thirty percent. Now, when we get down to the total revenues, um, it's averaging closer to the twenty to twenty five percent reduction. Um, but really this big chunk where we always see the most of our, our revenues coming in, that's where we're estimating the twenty to, uh, excuse me, the twenty five to thirty percent reduction. Um, I do have in for licenses and permits. Uh, so we do have a building department now that will be, um, issuing permitting fees. Um, we are going through a whole educational process with the public as to what does and does not need a building permit. Um, just because you are doing a project and a renovation does not mean that you don't need a building permit and those are not going to be the big, you know, huge payments, um, but they do add up. So I have estimated in here ten thousand dollars. I think when we look at amended budget, probably sometime in twenty twenty six, this is one we want to keep a close eye on because we are really just, this is a total guess right now. Um, since, since Bluff has not been doing the building permitting, um, up until April first of this year. Um, all of the other ones are going to stay relatively the same. Moving down into intergovernmental revenue, so this would be federal, state grants, county grants and things like that, as well as our Class C road allotment. You'll see that we're pretty much on track for the estimated seventy thousand dollars for Class C roads. Um, I am working closely with Michael Havikin regarding, um, his projections on what he thinks he'll spend, uh, for the rest of the year. I have not yet gotten back exactly where he thinks he's going to be as well as next year, but as you'll recall from fiscal year twenty twenty four, he did not spend. Um, he did not spend his budget, so that, um, rolled over into capital projects. It rolled over, um, into the, um, fund balance that went into this year, which will roll into next year, which is actually really helpful because when we do have the big road projects come up, then we have more money, uh, to put towards those. Uh, that does not mean that he's still not doing the everyday grading, ensuring that he's doing his inspections and everything. Um, but it is good to kind of build, um, that, that fund balance to ensure that we can pay for some of the bigger projects. Uh, you will see though, as a, as we talked about, uh, fifty five thousand compared to seventy thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty six, as we can assume that tax revenue may also decrease if fewer people are buying gas, using roads, et cetera. So that's where you'll see that. Um, I do have in here a full match of fifty five thousand dollars from the county for the Class C, uh, transportation roads funds. Um, I am completely spitballing this. I will verify with Michael. Um, fifty five thousand is the max amount that he can request. Um, but that really depends on how many projects he has plans for next year. Um, and as a reminder, I know we've gone through this a lot. Um, but roads is nested under our general fund, so we're going through the general fund right now. The CCC renovation project is a separate fund that we'll get to in a little bit. And then capital projects is a separate fund. However, capital projects feeds back into this fund. So getting into that in just two seconds. Charges for services, these are pretty much staying the same. We have our annual four percent increase in the airport hangar lease. Um, senior center staying the same, although we know that that contract is coming up. Um, so any input there is definitely appreciated if we think that's going to increase or decrease. And then community center rentals are going to stay relatively the same. Questions or comments so far from council?
I have one question. If you go back up to line thirty, so number three, one, three, seven. That's the, uh, PILT money.
So PILT is actually going to be under, I think it's down, oh, it's line fifteen. This one was from BSA. Uh, you'll see a lot of zeros in here. Um, what I'm pulling in is every single ledger count that we have ever used. Um, and there are a lot of zeros, but PILT is going to be under line fifteen. And I've got fifteen hundred on both.
Okay, because I was looking at the, the other line. Yeah. Okay. Great. And I'm good. Anybody else?
All right. This next section I think is, is a good one to call out. It's really important that we think about what capital projects we're pulling funds from. Um, when I say capital projects, it is, you know, a nebulous accounting, uh, fund. However, you can think of the actual cash as pretty much sitting in our PTIF account, which, um, year to date, I think the return on is around four point oh, three percent. It's over four percent. So that's our year to date. Um, we are on track to surpass my estimated forty five thousand dollars. I'm thinking we'll probably hit fifty three thousand dollars in interest. Um, and, uh, the hundred thousand that was in there for roads is going to have about forty five hundred. So a big consideration for next fiscal year. I mean, this is not chump change when we talk about our total budget percentage of this interest that we're we're in current or that we're accruing, excuse me. Um, but if you were to take out somewhere between three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars out of this savings account for potential projects, capital projects, um, big purchases. Our, um, projected interest in fiscal twenty twenty six would be cut by probably about half roughly. So just please keep an eye on this. I do think that this number could possibly change by the time we're done with budgets this year. Um, but that's why that one's in yellow. Uh, so the council is, is aware of what that three to four thousand, it could start three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar reduction might do if funds were spent, um, in twenty twenty six. Uh, okay. As you know, I don't like miscellaneous revenue. Things are not miscellaneous. Things are categorized. Uh, but I do have the fundraiser for EMS, which would be fundraiser for FIRE for this year. So you'll see that there or for, um, this coming fiscal year. Moving down into contributions and transfers, so I don't want you to put too much weight on any of this yet. The fund balance appropriation is the money moving over from previous years, so that, that's kind of the roll through money. Um, the proposed amended budget, you'll see that I am recommending that we move the capital projects, roads money, just back into the appropriation account. Um, for the coming fiscal year though, all of these numbers get shored up once we figure out our expenses. So don't hang a hat on any of these numbers right now. These are the checks and balances that get us to the balanced budget of revenues in, revenues out. So these are going to change. Um, however, knowing that we've got grant money coming in, knowing that, yeah, whoo, great job, Malia. Um, knowing that we potentially could be pulling some money from capital projects. Um, I am tentatively saying, tentatively that we would actually still have, um, a fund balance appropriated for fiscal year twenty twenty seven. Now, that's where we get into all the feedback of what we actually think our expenditures are going to be. Um.
So wait a second. Fund balance appropriated. Could you just put that in like common terms?
It's the roll, it's the surplus. It's a surplus. Um, as a reminder, for a town of our size, we cannot have more than one hundred percent roll over year to year of our total budget, but you'll see our budget is about a million right now. Um, in fund budget or fund balance as well as capital projects. I, I'm not going to use them interchangeably, but when I talked to Dave Sanderson, who's our accountant, he did say, if you've put money in capital projects and that's what you earmarked it for, but you need to move it back into the fund balance, you can do so. And vice versa. So if you say, oh, I'm going to roll it over into capital projects and it's going to hang there for a while, great, but then you end up having a deficit one year. You can pull that money back out of that fund. And again, we're not talking about the physical cash. We're just talking about how we're accounting for it. All right. Questions about revenues?
Any questions?
One of the areas that I do want to work on a little bit more closely are going to be the grants. So we got noticed like super late afternoon about the playground get grant. Um, we've got some other grant steps in here. But again, those are just going to be money in, money out, um, with minimal matching. I think that's the great part about us is, you know, usually that catch hash match is minimal. Um, but those all get all shored up to make sure all that's flowing correctly in and out. Okay. So moving on to expenditures. So the first area that I want to, we'll just jump to because it's, it's big. Um, so I've heard in the discussion last time that we did want to focus on finding a bookkeeper and finding a note taker. Um, after exploring Malia's position and the work that she's been doing, kind of in an administrative um, area, I think it would really benefit us to look at her bandwidth, increase her administratively to cover the note taker position. Um, as a reminder, we've had that fully, fully noticed, really didn't have any takers. That bookkeeper position, we did not have any qualified folks apply, um, we're going to work out. And so, uh, it would be my recommendation that we move Malia over to a salaried position. Um, and I will tell you, because I know the question will come up. Yes, I did talk to Malia before I before I'm presenting it to you all. Um, but I, I think it makes sense to go ahead and move her up to a salary position where she's able to cover more of these administrative duties. Um, and is also, you know, pulling in, there's just a lot that lands on her plate that doesn't cleanly fit into community center manager or project manager. Um, so if we're able to say we're increasing her hours, we're going to compensate her, um, you know, appropriately for that increase in hours. And then that will give us the flexibility that we need to cover the administrative needs of the business. I still think that we are strapped for time. Uh, you know, there's, there's only something hours in the day, but it would be my recommendation that we look at uh, changing that. So we not only have the bookkeeper and note taker covered, but we also have some additional administrative help. Um, in our current state, I feel as though we're, we're really struggling to fill small hourly positions, um, with folks. Um, you know, we've, we really have tried to, to post those and, and have not gotten, um, great results out of that. So. Questions and comments about that?
So you've put bookkeeper at zero. But would she be the, uh, assistant? Um, I'd notice, so, or who would do the bookkeeping?
So the bookkeeping, what I'm envisioning is that I'll continue to run payroll and do like the taxes and everything affiliated with that. But Malia, especially knowing that she's going to be more of like the, the tactical day to day person. She would be, um, putting the invoices into Boris. She, I think I would ease, I think we would ease her into like the full bookkeeping role. Um, so maybe I would be still be cutting checks and things like that, but she would be handling a lot of the other day to day stuff and making sure it gets into the system. Um, I think there's also a benefit to that too, if, you know, one of us goes on vacation. Um, what's that? I know we're not allowed to go on vacation, but no, if one of us goes on vacation, the, the other still knows how to do it. We don't have, we don't have an administrative, um, drop in duties. So, um, I'm not going to say like, yeah, we're going to task Malia with all of it. But I do think that we can start transitioning more and more over to her and then she and I can kind of work concurrently to ensure that that the business is covered based on the bandwidth. You know, there are going to be certain weeks that she's absolutely strapped for time because of the grants, project, whatever, and we can just kind of flex those a little bit. Um, I do want to ensure that, you know, the accountant, that accountant line is still in there. Dave Sanderson's been very helpful to ensure everything's in good shape.
He reassured me he's not going to dump us.
Oh, good, good. Uh, so, yeah, so that's what I got there and I'm very, I would also recommend that the council be open to, you know, a, a job title that would, uh, you know, best suit what we're asking Malia to do. I think it's kind of an all encompassing role. Um, but I've asked her to kind of brainstorm some ideas. Again, this is just kind of a shift in, uh, a shift in her daily tasks, adding a couple additional things. Um, and then, you know, really asking her to continue doing everything that she's already doing and just kind of adding to that role. Uh, the other, the other thing to note here too, um, we have had discussions internally about hours expectations, um, flexibility in the role and everything. And so the dollar amount that I have posted here does reflect that. And if you have any questions, uh, you know, we can talk through it. Uh, but, but Malia and I had a pretty good conversation about how we got to this particular salary and, and hopefully it, it makes sense for everyone.
I think too that one of the things we've, we've talked about and picked up and dropped and pissed up and dropped is doing, you know, more or less a flow chart about what each employee is doing. And once we get Malia kind of worked into that spot, I'd say, and we get through this budget, that we go back to that plan so that it's clear what Malia's jobs are, what Aaron's management jobs are, so that we don't have any kind of a cluey where suddenly Malia or Aaron are doing way more than they expected and they want. So I think getting that chart, yeah, here, you're not going anywhere. Get that chart really laid out so we're clear, but I know Aaron and Malia have been talking, so I'm comfortable. Yeah.
And it would be supervised by you guys.
I think, I think as we start, um, really digging into the strategic plan that talked about like that operational effectiveness, I think we will create like that formal flow chart that says mayor, the mayor, town manager, town managers over these departments. And then, um, you know, Malia probably will still be, um, like the janitorial supervisor and the maintenance supervisor and everything. Um, but like Craig, you know, AV tech reports to me, the clerk will probably report to me as we start really getting this out. And then it also makes sense to you that, you know, from like the payroll perspective, right? Like payroll, HR, all that kind of good stuff. Rolls up, but yeah, I, I don't have anything officially on paper right now, but that is what I'm envisioning to ensure that we have a good administrative um, blueprint for how to set it up for success moving forward.
Well, and like this, the new feature of interns. I could see that you're going to.
I'm going to supervise, but she will probably help like.
I could see that you would be supervising specifically like.
Yeah, she might like be a shot, like they'll shout at her for a day kind of thing, or I might, there might be like a project that's a little bit more in her vein, but that, they're probably going to roll up to, to me and then to like Michael and the roads department.
I, I was going to say, you know, bring in an intern to work, continue to work on the signs and the road and all of that. It's going to end up falling to you and me and Michael for supervision on that kind of project, you know? So those individual projects, the cemetery, for instance, assuming we prevail on the cemetery, probably, well, it's getting set up, that intern would report to me. Yeah. Overall, the big picture though of HR management, Karen does a much nicer job than I do. So she, she'll be doing the management. But we also added the building department. So we've got those contracts too.
Yeah. So we're, I'm thinking more like departmental management. And then, yeah, I definitely like the interns, um, growth plans and their one on ones and stuff, like they will absolutely be coming to me and making sure that they're on track. So. Moving right into interns.
And I'm assuming that the audit fees are in here somewhere.
Yes. So the auditor expense is just above. Um, this year it was eleven thousand eight hundred. I've got it at twelve thousand for next year. Um, I do have the accountant in here and I always add just like a little bit of conservative cushion. Dave has not yet raised his rates. I don't know if he's intending to. Um, but he seems like he's been good with his monthly rate, but I have just a little, little bit of cushion there. So.
And I, I don't expect this year that Larson will raise anything because I think by the, if I remember correctly, about six months before our audit starts, they let us know if they're going to do an increase. I think we're pretty solid on auditor.
Perfect. Um, all right. Excellent. So moving into admin interns. All right. So after doing all the budget a couple of times, um, I feel really confident if we were to scale back the third intern position to an eight week program as well. Originally I had like, I was really kind of tailoring it to interns availability as to, you know, this person's available for this long and this person's available for this long. If we were to look at all three interns and say, each of you are doing an eight week program capped at thirty hours a week, uh, that is what this budget reflects. So we would be able to bring on a third intern to help with the projects. Um, and those are pretty well split between this year and next fiscal year. Um, totaling ten thousand, pretty much eleven thousand dollars. So, um, definitely something that, that y'all can talk about. Um, but again, looking at an eight week program as opposed to like a twelve week program. All right. Um, a lot of this other stuff, we shouldn't say other stuff, but ad administrative things. Uh, we don't usually see really big increases or decreases in the everyday operations, like utilities and things like that. One area that I do want to call out before I come back to legal fees would be our technology and software. So all the devices that we're on right now, the fence Malia's um, are going to be obsolete on October fifteenth. And so built into next year's budget is a pretty healthy replacement fee. Um, we did have a pretty, pretty substantial IT fee this year as well, since we transitioned uh, third party IT service providers. Uh, but I, I do foresee IT continuing to be a, a pretty substantial cost. We do also have, you know, additional subscriptions to Microsoft and things as we continue to add administrative positions. So, you know, for the building department, for the interns, now those would, you know, I'm going to work with them to try the temporary, uh, temporary things. Um, you know, they're only here for eight weeks, but you know, realistically, IT is a very, it's a fairly costly endeavor and this year will especially be, we will also want to think for future councils that every four to five years we are replacing devices. Um, they just don't last as long as they used to.
Um, Erin, I have one question. Where will these interns actually be? Do you have rooms back here?
We do. So they're going to have, they're going to, they're going to be on site. Um, and I will definitely work with them in terms of their availability. There is going to be some like out in the world work, you know, going out and doing, you know, things like that. But we do have space. Um, you know, there is going to be some flex of what's available and when.
Hallway.
Hallway, yeah.
Uh, there's a nice couch in Malia's office.
Uh, but I definitely plan to talk with them one on one about, you know, their level of comfort. Um, you know, clearly from an internship perspective, like the growth is really important. Like they should be able to walk in and talk to us at any point in time. Um, I also would say, you know, since we would be supplying laptops, um, and I have two known laptops right now, and then we've got the desktop computer. Um, so in theory, we would not need to procure an additional device, um, as of right now, but we can, we can talk through that. I think the device would really be the only, only other change. If for some reason, we don't, you know, if we wanted all three of them to have laptops or short one laptop.
And if you got the laptop that then would roll over in October.
Great. Yeah. So my plan is, this is a little in the weeds, but the old device that the bookkeeper had, it looks like Malia's. I am going to offload all of my information onto, so that'll be my new device. And then my old laptop and Brit's old laptop, the internal laptops for this year. Cool. All right. So popping back up to administrative fees, um, so at the request, just to kind of have a little bit better understanding of us as we look at the different areas and facets of our legal expenses, um, I am breaking, uh, things, I'm going to break them out into three categories. So we have general administrative legal fees, which is what you're seeing here. Um, which for this year, estimating about twelve thousand dollars. Then we have legal fees associated with the CCC building and Utah to name a CA. And so we're looking at about sixteen thousand, um, five hundred for that. And then for the disconnect lawsuit and I am projecting our end of year, fiscal year, end of year is about sixty five thousand dollars. Um, and that's assuming some additional legal fees, uh, through the end of June. Um, I am working, I would work with Dave to get this all moved over because they had just been sitting under admin legal. But I, I do have the entire breakdown of everything. I know this, I know these numbers make no sense to you, but they make a lot of sense to me. So, um, I will get them in their respective categories, but those are the totals that we're looking at. So that total legal is going to be, oops. Total legal for fiscal twenty twenty five projected is ninety three thousand five hundred. Uh, I don't have much in there for fiscal twenty twenty six and I'm going to need some direction on that. Uh, I don't have much in there for fiscal twenty twenty-six, and I'm going to need some direction on that. I tentatively have thirty-five thousand dollars in general legal fees. Um, I think we, it seemed, you know, I would imagine that we'll have a much better idea by the time, you know, the next couple of weeks roll around, um, what that's gonna be, but we do know that that's a, a large administrative expense. Questions or comments there? Or am I good to move on?
How much did we spend on public notices?
Public notices, I see Britt, you've got your hand raised, two seconds. Um, public notice, so I do have, um, public notices for the CCC broken out under the special revenue or special funds, um, but public notices are usually year-to-date. Or I'm, I'm expecting about a thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's not, it's not as much as I thought it was actually. Um, Britt, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, we'll see if I get some echo. Um, yeah, so it's just a general comment about the legal, um, the legal lines. Is that, I appreciate you busting it all out into what the individual expenses are and where that's headed. Um, it's just more of a general comment that like I, I would like us to maybe even add to it. Um, that thirty-five you've got now, uh, the ninety-three or whatever we're, we're at. Um, I'm for adding more to it. Um, I don't really like, I feel like there's this approach or this thought that legal expenses are an outright loss or something like that, and they're just defending ourselves isn't a loss. So, um, I want us to be healthy in that, in that budget item so that when these, a lot of times frivolous lawsuits and threats of, uh, lawsuits come up, that we're not letting that hamstring our decision-making on what's best. So just that, my comment there.
I'm gonna highlight all of these, knowing that, I mean, all of these will have some kind of increase, um, but I'll try to get a better estimate on that.
So let me just make one comment based on what Britt said. So we have a work session next week on the budget. So our charge today is to adopt a tentative budget, which means we continue to work on it next week and the next week and whatever. So while we can go through, I, and I appreciate it because Britt, I, I'm, I'm with you, it's gonna have to be up to a little bit on the legal fees. But I think on a lot of these, as you're going through it, maybe not necessarily addressing it tonight, today, but in the work session next week. Like you think this is too low or this is too high. Because what we'll be doing is that somebody will be making a motion to adopt a tentative budget. And that's where we start really breaking down what we think is, is, needs to be changed or modified. So keep going, Erin.
Alright, so I know it's already four thirty-five, so I will just kind of keep going. Uh, elections expense, so. I have seventy-five hundred in there for right now.
Okay.
This is a work session discussion, uh, or maybe even a next-gen items discussion, but seventy-five hundred is what I got in there. Um, let's hold it to number two.
Okay.
Alright, so.
There's one back on forty-one, thirty-eight and forty-one, no, it's a four, how about forty-four, sixty-one? Oh, yeah, but not there yet, sorry. Forty-one, thirty-eight and forty-one, thirty-nine were empty for trash and house control.
Oh, that's because they got put down lower, um, under buildings and grounds and solid waste trash. I just need to move them. They, they should, I want them under, um, parks and facilities. So, but they, they are not zeroed, I definitely.
Oh, you've put stuff in since I yeah, I have a copy of it, okay.
Uh, let's see here, let me see, enforcement. Ooh, I zeroed out enforcement, that's not right. Uh, enforcement, I should have had five thousand in there. And then I didn't necessarily had any, have anything in here for, for this fiscal year, open to it. Uh, okay.
And enforcement pays a potential enforcement person?
Not sure, TDD. It's kind of, I'm not, I need direction from the council as to what enforcement's gonna look like.
Five thousand dollars, that probably doesn't.
It's not a person.
It's pay an enforcement person.
Might be some legal fees, might be some paperwork. Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, moving into parks and recreation. So as previously discussed, uh, community center manager salary, this is probably what we're looking at tentatively for the end of the year. If we keep Malia in her current role through there, otherwise we can do some shuffling and then it's zeroed out for next. I did receive notice from Chief Lot that they have the capability and would like to spend all fifteen thousand dollars allocated to them by the end of this fiscal year. He's got everything lined up. Um, so I have added that back in and then have tentatively said that we would have something similar for next fiscal year. Uh, EMS supplies, I'm proposing that I could use a couple extra dollars potentially for an EMS appreciation thing that we'll talk about later. Um, with the rollover from last fundraiser moving into next year. Building department, it looks like by the end of the year, we will spend about fifty-eight hundred dollars. Tentatively looking at twenty thousand dollars next year for administration. You'll remember that projected revenue is ten thousand, but again, it's a shot in the dark. We have no idea what, what we're gonna bring in this year. This coming year is really gonna be the test year to see how, how things are covered. Uh, I do have in here some capital projects, capital improvements. I was able to get the playground in here. I need to check all my numbers here. I've got twenty-seven thousand five hundred for the cemetery, which would be a twenty thousand dollar grant plus some match out of capital improvements, capital projects.
Hold on, no, with the match at the cemetery grant, it can be unkind.
We had already had it in capital projects, like approved.
Okay.
So if we want to do cash, we can. If you guys don't want to do cash and reallocate, you can too. So up to you, but I, I use the full amount. If you want me to drop it, I can.
Let me think about it.
Okay, uh, we've got options. Uh, BCC capital projects, potentially lighting by the end of the year, maybe, possibly, possibly might need to roll into next fiscal year. Uh, yeah, to be determined. We also have the solo project, we've got painting, we've got wifi, we've got generator and batteries. There's a lot of capital projects and grants and everything shoved in here that we just need to take a look at and really find why now. Malia and I will go with that. We've got just regular supplies, utilities. Uh, Bob Promotion, Diana confirmed with me that they also are able to use their full five thousand by the end of the year. Um, and I would recommend the same for next year. Uh, roads, all TDD, but I just have it matching what the revenues are. So, um, I, you know, Michael, this is up to what he could spend uh, with the current projections of revenues coming in. Uh, it would be my hope that by the work session, he's able to get us uh, some, some more breakdown, but for the sake of passing a, a proposed tentative budget, this would, this would be what we're looking at.
So that miscellaneous one kind of caught my eye too, because fifteen thousand, is that roads miscellaneous forty-four, sixty-one?
Oh, that was at his request last year.
That's that discretionary amount that we allow him.
Hmm.
Which he has not used any of yet this year. Uh, so airport had all been, oh.
No, you're right. Yeah, we, because we ended up having to take the survey out of general funds off.
Uh, airport, so airport is usually nested under parks and recreation. I have broken it out for this exercise. And then before we pass the budget, it will be a separate fund. Um, but what I'm doing is balancing it the same way I balance roads, the same way I balance everything else. And so you'll find the hanger expense, uh, or the hanger revenue that we receive pretty much covers the insurance and our lease with a very small amount than carrying year-to-year. Uh, so just as a complete heads up on that one, the hangars are pretty much covering those expenses. Um, that insurance at three thousand dollars a year, uh, plus the increased, uh, lease from about seven hundred and sixty dollars to fifteen hundred and sixty-eight pretty much eats up that hanger lease revenue.
And we have to use any money we get for the airport in a separate fund.
So that is the proposed, I think it was a house bill or some kind of legislation. I think they were looking for feedback on it until the end of April. But yes, when we get to, um, when we get to budget approval, approval, it'll be in a separate fund. I have broken it out for the sake of the exercise. Britt, was your, is that a new hand raise? I'm sorry.
No.
No, sorry. Put down, okay. So then same as the appropriated fund balance from above, these budgeted increases in fund balance are gonna be the same, right? We'll see these numbers shift quite a bit by the end of the year because it's doing the budget or the balancing of these funds. Uh, but you will see that, uh, I'll work my way up. So airport has a little bit moving over into next year and then an even smaller amount moving into fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Roads has roughly, and it's prob, roads will definitely be more than this. Um, because I don't think he can spend like a hundred thousand dollars in the next two months, but I could be surprised. Um, but he has a lot moving over, roads has a lot moving over, and then depending on how much he's projecting to spend in twenty twenty-six, that'll roll over. What we're looking at right now is a hundred thousand rolling over into next fiscal year. And then we do have stuff rolling over, but again, that's a lot because we're pulling a lot out of capital projects. Um, those capital projects funds are really, I don't want to say like inf, in, inflating the expenses, but they are, they, they kind of are. Um, so our actual administrative budget is down quite a lot. Um, but the transfers and the movement from capital projects in and out get us to about a, a million dollars on each of these years. Um, wouldn't put two million for next year if we do all the projects that I'm thinking we might do. But again, work session, talk with Malia, all that stuff. Okay, um, quick thing, so capital projects, um, I don't have anything in here right now because I had so many weird grants moving last night. Um, but what I can do really fast is just all the stuff that you see in that general fund that is related to capital projects just goes in there. And then for the special revenue account for the CCC, um, we have our manager wages that were paid out of EPA grant year-to-date. I'm just leaving up there. Everything else is getting pulled from our administrative accounts. Um, I have zeros for next year. Public notices would probably, probably throw some stuff in there. Um, and then really the big one would be professional services. And so I have fifty thousand dollars for this fiscal year and the remaining of the hundred and seventy-eight, which is one twenty-eight for next fiscal year. And those are our known expenses right now. Um, I'm definitely open to increasing this. But I think we'll have a lot more information after we talk to the architectural services, um, team in a little bit.
And the engineers.
Yeah.
So is that it? What have you been doing in here?
I don't know, it's weird, I know, um.
Okay, so I do have to make this comment that as everyone's aware, I complained the first year that Erin was with us and she did too much on the budgets and didn't have me doing it and I am so thankful. I am like so major thankful through the last two years of not having to look at numbers where I'm not a numbers person. So Erin, thank you for doing such a magnificent job on these things and I think notebook keeping, that's what I've done. Really helpful, so.
I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I, I think that we will see more changes this year between now and when you all finally approve the budget than we did in years past. Um, but I think that's a good thing. It means that the town is growing. We do have a lot more on our plates. Um, but just bear with me as we, as we make those changes and adjustments and, you know, for the public, we will get this up on the website. But please know that like this is a living, breathing document. Uh, this will look, I don't want to say like drastically different, you know, because there are admin costs that stay relatively the same. But we are gonna see pretty big shifts as we figure out what capital projects you actually, you know, really want to target in the next twelve months.
And is this in our access in our?
The PDF is, um, I can share the Excel document with you as well, so you can see the, the formulas and everything.
I have, was a little bit delayed on this one.
Yeah, it's, it's hard on the PDF, I know. Um, so I'll keep, I'll keep the live document Excel myself, but I'll share it with you. And if you want to go in and do numbers and stuff, you totally can.
Hey, any other questions? Britt, how are you doing? Do you have any questions?
No thumbs up. Lots of numbers, sorry Britt.
That's great, I appreciate your background and things to be able to do this.
In addition to having a motion to adopt the tentative fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, we have to set a public hearing date. And the public hearing date is going to be, if everyone's okay with it, somewhere in here. May twentieth. Thank you, May twentieth. And that's a Tuesday, so it'd be probably the, the start of our meeting on that date. Do we have a meeting that day or is that?
Oh no, we don't have a meeting. I was just trying to remember what you sent to the Samon record, if it was five thirty or four.
I think it was, I don't know, look it up. Five thirty. So it'll be at the end.
End.
Yeah, it'll be at the end. And so if everyone's okay with that, we will need a motion to adopt the tentative budget and then a second motion for the date.
It's agenda's not showing now, is that okay? Or can we like tell next meeting?
No, we have to vote on that tonight. We're just, we're not adopting the budget, we're just adopting a tentative, so. Have to do it on it before your first meeting in May.
I make a motion that we adopt the tentative budget for twenty twenty-six and the amended twenty twenty-five budget.
You don't, hold on, we don't have to adopt the amended twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-six, uh, tentative budget.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. And then I will send everybody a copy of the notice that's going to run on the date. I'm gonna double-check my county to be sure that we're, we're good on it before I send it to have it run. But we were pretty careful at figuring it out, so I think that's good. The number three.
Did you have to vote on the?
Yeah. Hold on then. Did you say that again?
Need a motion for the public hearing date for accepting the public hearing date?
Um, we can make one, yeah. I don't think it's necessary, but go ahead. Nope, somebody made.
I motion that we set the public hearing for, uh, budget for twenty twenty-six on May twentieth at five thirty PM.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, no one's opposed, it's unanimous. Alright, then the update on the status of the twenty twenty-five elections. I, I am going to say that if San Juan County administration exists as we know it last week, in a year, I will be stunned. Within three weeks, well, within six weeks, we have created a building department based on a dump of the building department of San Juan. We have seen a huge switch in what we are paying for, are going to be asked to pay for in elections. And just as an aside, it's not on the agenda, but EMS is coming at us. Daytime, that was today. So in the course of several months, a couple of months, we are seeing San Juan County digest itself or tie to collect money from the municipalities. That being said, our, when we incorporated in twenty eighteen and had our first election, we didn't get a bill. In twenty nineteen for the election, twenty twenty, we didn't get a bill. In twenty twenty-one, when Megan, uh, Gallegos came on board with the county and John David Nielsen was leaving, we finally were able to shake loose the bill when I'm in Dunedin came in, however, nobody knew how the bill they, nobody could account for the charges. So I negotiated with the county, with everyone's permission, and got figures for those election years. So we have, we we have some responsibilities during the election process. We get this printout from the Lieutenant Governor's office. We get this printout from the Lieutenant Governor's Office, telling us what municipalities do, what the county that is running your election does. We've had possibly two inter-local agreements since Lyman. It might have only been just last year, but this year, he asked me if I could go over the inter-local agreement with them. I went to the office. Um, Vint de Gra had prepared it. I sat down with them, we went over it. It was roughly three thousand dollars, thirty-five, thirty-five hundred roughly. Sounded reasonable. And what are we at today, Erin?
We're at twelve thousand dollars plus the cost of translation and, um, denay interpreter services. Because the, I'm just gonna say it. I know people listen to our meetings, but it's fine. Um, the other municipalities, well, I will say Blanding specifically, was paying probably closer to thirty thousand dollars for their elections, um, because they were doing it. San Juan County was basing that off of a per ballot system. Um, so roughly every ballot clock, you know, if you spread it out across the entire county, all however, ten, eleven thousand ballots. Something, it's gonna be less than that, but seven dollars per ballot. So of course, Blanding with a much larger population was paying somewhere thirty thousand dollars. We're paying thirty-five hundred roughly, maybe four thousand bucks. Well, Trent went to go talk to
Who's the manager?
Who's the manager? Trent is, uh, Trent Herring is their city manager, went to go talk to, um, the elections office and said, well, you have all these fixed costs with the election. If you're having all the municipalities, you should just equally split the fixed costs between the three. So Blanding sees a huge reduction in what they would be paying and we see five times what we've been seeing in the past. So we're jumping from thirty-five hundred up to twelve thousand dollars, not including any of the language or interpretation services. And then our cost per voter, so if we have, um, so our cost per voter per election is twenty-six dollars. So that would be for the primary and the general. So total for the year, we would be paying over, um, forty-six, forty-six dollars per person voting per year plus all of what we're gonna have to pay for translation and interpreter services. So we're talking well over, well over fifty dollars, probably, I would assume probably closer to sixty dollars um, per year, per person for elections, uh, which is just astronomical and quite frankly, like a little insulting. Um, so Ann and I had a great meeting with the Lieutenant Governor's Office this afternoon in which we were discussing the possibility of us running our own election. So clearly, when we're talking the bigger elections, um, this gets a little dicier. And, you know, we would want to consider probably on an annual basis if we would want to manage the election or not based on what's on the ballot, but knowing that we are having a municipal election, there are no referendums. There is nothing at the county level being voted upon. We are just filling, not just, sorry. We are filling two very important council seats and the mayoral seat. Um, we were talking with the Lieutenant Governor's Office about what the legal requirements would be for us to run our own election. And so, um, I don't have any of the costs yet. I don't have any of the, you know, but I think a gut feeling is that it would definitely be less than twelve thousand plus interpretation services. The most important thing is, are we able to maintain the chain of custody? I would say yes, we would have the, do so. We need to have cameras. Um, we need to have poll watchers, we need to have audits. And so she walked us through like this list of things. She'll send us the list. But I think realistically, we, we very well could manage the election ourselves if we want to put in the time and money. I think administratively, um, it is doable.
And in addition to, to kind of those pieces, there's the practicality of it is that it is very clear that San Juan County is desperate in their budget and they are cutting and moving as much as they can. And while I would, while I agree, this is gonna be a learning curve, it's better to learn when we only have three things that we're voting on rather than getting to the federal and state elections where we have a two-sided ballot. And the hardest part really will be guaranteeing that our envelopes are correctly printed so we can match the voters up. But Erin and I are exploring it, uh, the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Shelley Jackson and her team were on, they're really helpful. They're talking to a number of other municipalities as well because this is a question that's coming up um, a lot this year for them.
And they were, what they were saying is that like, these increases are being seen across the state. So like Salt Lake, um, was it the county or the city? Was seeing like seventeen dollars per person, per ballot. But again, and she said, you know, I have a shack and he said forty-six. And then she's like, oh, but it's only twenty-six. I'm like, but it's not twenty-six because now we're still paying for all of the language services, which I think is very important. Clearly, we need to do that. There's no disagreement there. Everyone's shaking their head like, yeah, we're doing that. But I really think that realistically, we're paying, we're probably gonna be paying close to thirty-five to forty dollars per person for a ballot. And it just, you know, that's astronomical. And Shelley did reach out to San Juan County. They've already been having some discussions. But I do think, you know, yes, this is gonna be a learning curve, but they are, they've already said that, you know, they'll do trainings. Um, the piece that San Juan County, there are two pieces that San Juan County still would have to do. And the first is that they have to do the signature verification. So we'd have to physically take the ballots up to the county and do the signature verification. Um, and then they are also doing the extracts. Is that correct?
Yeah.
The mailing list. Um, so we've got to match up the mailing list on a routine basis. And I think those were the only two that we had to do through them. I think we, I think it would really behoove us to explore an inter-local agreement that says, we're gonna buy some envelopes off of you and we'll pay for your admin, admin time to verify the signatures.
So I see that it could be a big headache for us to run it ourselves. When you get right down to it, is it Malia? Are we putting that on?
No.
No, we could, you guys have taken on a whole other career of doing an election every year, every two years.
Well, and that's the thing, I don't want to do it annually, but I think for the smaller ones, we really should think about, you know, because no, I, I don't think we would want to do the big ones, but.
Well, you know, I agree with you though that it is taking on something. But here's where I see where the state is going. This state is going with the mantra, we love local control. However, we're gonna control the local control and local, you're gonna do more and it's gonna be unfunded mandate. Last year, not this legislative session, the, the year before, there were over four hundred legislative things where only like thirty were funded. So the handwriting to me is on the wall in Utah. It's pass it down, pass it down, pass it down. And I, this would be a good run because it's, it's relatively simple. I do agree with you. We don't have to buy voting machine or, uh, counting voting machines. We can hand count. We have, there are certain services we can contract, uh, that we have to contract with San Juan County. But.
Yeah, and I also think, you know, we need to keep the the working relationship open with the county too. And if this throws a wrench in all of the county's elections, I don't know, I just think we need to look at the whole.
Yeah, and, and I think it wouldn't be, you know, the alternative to it is, and Erin and I haven't had a chance to talk about it because we've been running from county meeting to whatever. But you know, one other alternative to look at is, is to literally play hardball with San Juan County. And realistically, you are dumping, 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 and we cannot fiscally manage all these dumps. For this year, stay the course. For 2025, we'll pay you the four thousand, you run the election. We'll look at what next year looks like. But we, I mean, when Vint de Gra heard Erin and me at that meeting yesterday say, we've been handed this, great, we've got a building department, that's fine. Now we're being handed this, great. Now today, it's EMS. You can only absorb so much so quickly. And I agree, you want to have a good relationship with the county. Um, Vint and Lyman were really very supportive today when I went back in to talk about a couple of the glitches I already saw. But I think we need to explore it so we have all the options.
I think one of the other, sorry to cut, and I see Britt has his hand raised too. But one of the other things that I think is concerning when we look at elections, and like this is not a one-time issue, is how many times we have to hunt down and say, why aren't you doing X, Y, and Z? Like the fact that we are going to the county almost every election, probably multiple times in an election, and saying, you were supposed to do this for us. Why aren't you here with the early in-person voting? To have to hold them accountable, like we're already doing a lot of the admin work and like keeping them in line. And so if we can keep that in-house, I do see a benefit to that, that we, you know, we're adhering to the standards that are set and the regulations that are set. I mean, I cannot even tell you the number of times that Ann and I have called the county or called the Lieutenant Governor's Office and asked about what they're doing because it's just not quite to the T of what it needs to be. And when we talk about, you know, election regulations, those are really important things. I know our constituents care about it. And if we can do it and can do it right, I think we should. If we don't think that we have the capability, then no, of course, we need to step back and make sure that, you know, we're, we're just paying the cost.
It would certainly be nice if we could get it under fifty dollars a voter. I think that would be discouraging to anybody coming to vote, like, why am I gonna try? Like what, what's broken with that system that it's that expensive?
Absolutely.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I see when it's, it's just a local election where we have our two hundred and fifty residents that we have to deal with. That, why that bill would solely come to bluff, but when we're the polling location for our town and then the reservation, which is to, you know, technically outside of our town limits, why are we being charged the full, you know, the full amount? Shouldn't the county be absorbing some of that amount? Because we are serving as polling, polling location for us and beyond.
What, what happened with the mail-in voting that?
They, they do, we do have like, there are like mail-in requirements and everything that we'll have to adhere to. But I think it should not be disregarded that the county is paying two hundred thousand dollars because they failed to adhere to election law. And they're passing along that, you know, whether it's a direct line item or not, they, they messed up. They didn't do what they needed to do legally to provide services to people who don't speak English as first language. And we're getting it with that. And so I, I think that's really important that we, that we recognize what we can do to make sure we're doing it right.
The other, the other piece of it is, that was really, we can send out the worksheets that they gave us. But we're getting charged as a fixed charge, forty-three thousand dollars divided among the municipalities for an employee who's running the election, who's already an employee doing their job that we're paying taxes for. Come on, you know, this is
Double dipping.
Yes, and so let us take a look at it. We'll package everything up and send it out so everyone can look at it.
Brit, any questions?
Okay, um, and then let's go to Britt before I say the next thing. Britt?
No, I guess I'm just looking for a bit of clarity on, um, how did this decision get made to where we were just picking up a third? Um, I'm, I'm just getting super confused on how that happened.
Us too.
So here's what happened. I got a, uh, email from Vint de Gra, who's the uh, employee for elections under Lyman Duncan. And he said, can you and I meet to go over the inter-local agreement for voting for the election? And I said, sure. So I was up there for another meeting. And so I went over to his office at the designated time and he handed me the inter-local agreement. And it looked just like the inter-local agreement we signed before. And we went over the costs and the cost was roughly the same as before, thirty-five hundred, four thousand. And then we got a message from Vint that said, hey, I was unaware that San Juan County Commissioners were going to be signing off on the second revised settlement agreement between the county and the Navajo Nation regarding provision of language assistance during our elections. This has impacts on the inter-local agreements that were presented to all of you in the past week. So he called a meeting yesterday in Blanding and the managers from all three municipalities, myself and, um, a staff member who runs elections in Monticello were there. And this was what he laid out. Now what Vint failed to clarify is that Trent Herring had already had all this data provided to him two weeks ago. The week before, um, Monticello had some of the information. We had none of those changes. We got hit with the changes sitting there yesterday. So Erin and I, um, because we're so unopinionated, did not express any concern. And so today, we, Erin set up the phone call with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, which I might add, we, on every election, we have had to make at least one, if not two, calls to Lieutenant Governor's Office to clarify policy procedures of things. For instance, our Dropbox never gets picked up from the time they put it in till the time they pick it up. It's supposed to be emptied every week and accounted for. So there are these things that keep popping up. But anyway, let us keep working on it. Does that answer your question, Britt?
Yes, some, somewhat. I mean, I'm, I'm still a little confused on the reasoning, I guess, like that it's shaken out this way where it's so unequitable. Um, like, and how they would just have arrived there, but, um.
Let me, let me tell you what Trent Herring said and Erin can correct me if I misstate it. Essentially, the way they were doing it, it was proportionate to our population. But because last year, I believe Trent, Trent used the fact that in our last election, we bluff was the only municipality that had to have a primary because we had a bunch of people file and then withdraw at the last minute. So they still had to hold the primary. In his mind, probably correctly, they got hit with some of the cost for our primary. So instead of doing it that way, they're just doing it differently. We're gonna all share equally in fixed costs, which is disproportionate to our budget and population. But it benefits the other two somewhat, well, quite a bit. Oh, oh.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it's getting into like totally illegal. Like yet again, they're stumbling into something that's, uh, targeting us, um, through elections. So I'm, I'm just, uh, yeah, confused and definitely for doing whatever, I mean, the, I agree with you, Ann, the writing's on the wall with everything, that they're falling apart and that honestly, I'm kind of tired of being connected to their mistakes all the time. So anything that distances from that would be great. Um, but yeah, I just did, it's just striking me as like, uh, like civil rights kind of more of an issue here where we're being targeted like this. So, um, but yeah, thank you.
Well, we'll keep working on it.
This is, this is a little techie thing, but Ann, your camera's not on.
Oh, she usually. It should, it should pick up on the owl.
Yeah, it's not. But anyway, I just.
Yeah, if I have my camera on too, I have it on the owl and here.
So you're not on either one right now, just that by I.
Yeah, thank you. I've always, I always put my camera on. So why is the owl now?
Oh, probably because I'm louder than you. Sorry, you're always loud.
I can turn it on, but I don't like doing it that way because I don't like looking at two screens and then.
There's just a little sliver there you want. There you're on.
Yeah, I just have to stop talking.
Yeah. I'm doing that camera off. All right, then. Number three is review and vote on amendments to bluff's plan and zoning bylaws, code of conduct, the rules of order and procedure. This can be very quick. When, when we talked about them before and voted, I was holding back on one of these.
The location.
Yeah, on anchor location. And we still don't have, um, an answer from our attorney whether we need to have an anchor location or not. So I am just going to move that whole number three over. We have approved two of them, but I just have it on as a lump thing. So I'm moving this to next week, which would be May thirteenth. We'll have to have a meeting, so I'll just put it on May thirteenth. It'll be a quick one. Malia, status of the art rail.
A quick meeting.
Um, so in your practice this week, I sent out the art rail for the community center hallway and offices. Um, so this is just a document that I have been working off of. So if you go down to my beautiful table, we have the different quotes for the rails. And so what we're looking at is the art rail, we, at, at our last discussion, you guys decided you didn't want lights on it. So I didn't even provide a quote for lights. And we have three different quotes with the hallway as one selection and then offices one through three. And, um, they're all pretty much the same, except for the third, which is the wooden crown molding, molding, which is what we have. Here in the community center. So we'd require those rail hooks and then the house, the actual. Uh, string with the hook on the end. So it'd be one additional piece of equipment. And it's actually thought to be about the same amount, except I would not be able to install that one because it would actually require. Cutting of wood, whereas these other two would be an easy. Cut of metal and then just screw it in. And to answer your previous question, Jen, you were asking if they're movable and yes. Options one and two are held by a wall anchor and screw. Option three, that molding could be moved, but I'd be a little bit more concerned about that because it is wood. And I assume we'd probably be hanging it with glue if that would hold it strong enough. So, um. To go over what those prices are for the, the clip rail, clip rail pro, we're looking at four thirty-one ninety for the hallway. And then per office, three forty-five seventy-nine. For the next election, the June Moore, um, the north and south hallway, three seventy-five sixty, and then total per office is approximately four hundred. Just because of the way that those are sold, they're sold in packs of two. And so we would actually need nine rails per office. So the reason that there's an approximate is because one package would actually work for two offices. Uh, the wooden crown molding, north and south hallway, three ninety-eight eighty-one, and then total per office, four twenty-five sixty-one. So I broke it out like that so that you guys can decide if you want to just do the hallway, if you want to just do offices, do both. Let me know what you're thinking.
Can't find it. I know.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to look at the prices that I can.
Yeah, can you share yours?
Yeah.
Let me, let me connect to the.
It was in this first packet, I thought, I saw it. I have not. Trying to get to the ones. Well, maybe it's late Tuesday.
Did you say no?
Bye.
I don't see it in the first agenda packet thing, but.
It was in part two of two.
Oh.
If it's a link below part two of two.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, it's on that.
All right, I'm sharing it now.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the email portion with the link.
Oh.
Underneath the second, under the budget list.
I love to confuse.
That's all right, I do.
I turned it off because I'm, I've got stuff in the background.
Okay, well, I have it presented on there.
No, you don't.
I don't?
Yeah, you do.
So how does our, uh, budget holding up? Like which one of these fits the budget and which one are you proposing? Like, what do you think is the best?
I prefer one or two. I don't want to have to deal with a wood molding. Because then we'd also need to paint it and stuff. So the, the costs. Associated with the wood crown molding would be more expensive and it's already a bit more expensive than the others without even thinking about installation. So I would be comfortable with either the June Moore or the Clip Rail Pro. Which I can pull up pictures up on.
But then what about offices and hallway? Or I kind of was picturing it as the hallway.
Sounds good. That's why I broke it into different categories. Depending on what the cost is, you guys can decide if you want it to be offices and hallway. I actually was chatting with some of the help team. And asking, I was like, ooh, it'd be really cool if we could hang plants from it because then we could even put like. Plant hangers in front of our windows, but it might be silly for us at this point to be decorating our offices and making them beautiful just for us. In a year or so, fingers crossed, to be over at the CCC with offices.
Well, going with that, in my office. I like my own. I like cleaning my own stuff up. Of course, I'm only gonna be here for eight months. So that future person, you know, I. Might.
Totally.
So I don't. But how, can you hang things in the offices without one of these little railings?
Yeah, for sure. It's just a matter of putting holes in the wall in that case.
I like ju- just doing the hallway. And part of that is just because. It makes me edgy to have anything that's. Art kind of put in somebody else, you know, someone's office where if you walk, I don't know. I, I like it better in the hall.
Well, and that's why I think, I think if we had a, a rotating display, it would be in the hall. This would be more for. People to hang their own stuff in the offices.
Yeah, people are doing that. So. Anybody have a strong other opinion?
Well, I agree. Hallway, I think it's more dramatic, just having. Um, other people's art in the hallway.
Well, also that's, you know, I mean, that's, that's the main public, I mean, the, the general public does go into the offices occasionally, but I, I feel like. The hallway is the public space.
And are you saying that you could do the June Moore without having additional employees? Which is a, a perk of that too.
Right. Might as well.
And the STAS could be done that way as well.
Yes.
Do you have a preference over, I mean, we're talking fifty dollars difference.
No, I think they're both very similar to. In style as well as quality.
You need to look at shipping costs and stuff on these to see if that bums one of the other.
No. I haven't, but the June Moore, I think you can order both of them through Amazon. Uh, June Moore definitely would be through Amazon. I can take a better look.
Because that might change.
And go with the one that's cheaper. So I'm kind of feeling like we're doing the same thing we did with the trash cans.
I make a motion that believe Collins has the authority to order one of the two, whichever of the shipping. Is more reasonable and available. Also, can that motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Number five is discussion and vote on Hanson Group's proposal on the airport overlay ordinance and the general plan review. We got a quote up. We have to do an airport overlay. It has to fit into the general plan. Hanson gave a quote. Which of course, I hopefully can find. Erin, is that in the packet? Give me a second here.
Give me a second here.
Oh, man, wow.
I've got it. So we have the airport overlay. Two thousand dollars at a hundred and sixty per hour. So estimated two thousand. We think it's gonna take about a dozen hours. And then do you have the general plan right now? Yes. Um. We can do an audit of the general plan for about six hundred and forty dollars. And that'll, it seems like the same price of a hundred and sixteen hours. So it's gonna be about four hours of work.
And then Hanson would work with planning and zoning on an hourly rate if they want it. But there are several pieces we have to plunk into the general plan, but this would kind of move it back to. Uh, planning and zoning. So plan, and this is what planning and zoning would like to see.
And this is what puts us in compliance with the state on both of these items.
It does.
And it was originally, they were just gonna donate that part, but we've got a fee to it now. This is the updated fee for the general plan review.
They, they will, they will still do an, an overview of the general plan, but they wouldn't give us specific information of six forty. They will give us specific language as to what we need to have. So that's the difference. But that is what we're planning zoning this request to be approved.
Um, I motion that we accept the Hanson Group proposal for the airport overlay ordinance and the general plan review as presented.
Second. The only other comment I'd make is that we've had the airport overlay sitting with our attorney. Which is over three hundred and some dollars an hour and we haven't gotten it. So we're saving money by doing this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed?
And. Will you or have he been notified so they're not doing work on it? Because I have to leave.
No, I didn't want to notify him until it was approved.
You know, in case it's already like in the process or something.
Trust me, he's not in the process. I understood priorities. He hasn't even done priority. We're not disappointed. Yeah, so. Well, I think we're good, but I will be sending that email. I will send an email this week and communicate a couple of things that was resolved. Right, the number six is a discussion and vote on hiring a third intern. Erin had indicated earlier in the budget that we have the funds to do that and. Last week indicated we'd have to work for three interns. Does anybody need more information?
No, I think we have it in the budget. I motioned that we, uh, expand the intern, uh, positions to the third intern for the eight-week period that was proposed earlier in this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous. So. It's five twenty-three. I think most of these we've communicated through. Pretty quickly, but let's look at the time after Erin talks about number seven.
As quick as, as fast as possible. Okay, so as we're transitioning to dot gov, I was looking at our entire website. Currently, we operate off of WordPress. We pay fifteen dollars a month for domain hosts. Of X mission. They cannot host dot gov domain. So while we were changing everything over, I was trying to explore other options for our website, knowing that most of our constituents. Are going to our website to receive information. WordPress is not great. Don't love WordPress. Um, it is free. GoDaddy is probably not gonna be a whole lot of money to host it on there. We can do that. However, I wanted to explore some government. Type websites who would do the domain hosting. They would do the website. Um, they move a lot of our data and put it into these nice little templates. They're easier to use. They're easy on cell phones. They're easy on tablets and they're easy on computers. So the cheapest option is just GoDaddy. We keep WordPress. We use the intern, intern interns. Um, to kind of reformat, redo, um, a couple of considerations for websites. They do have to be ADA compliant now. Um, doesn't seem like the laws are too difficult to understand, but also I don't have time to go through it, but that would be an intern project. You know, two companies that I found, one, and I'm giving you examples here on the screen. Um, so the one is Revise, um, that's R E V I Z E. Um, both of these are really similar, um, Revise and Civic Plus. Revise's cost would be a six to seven hundred dollar transition fee plus nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars annually. So definitely an increase over, um, what we're paying currently, but that's about, I think, eighty-five, somewhere eighty, eighty-five dollars per month. Um, and they have all of these nice, so I'm looking at Cedar Rapids, Iowa right now, because that's one of their examples. But they have all these nice little icons. They organize things more cleanly. And then the menus, both of these options have like really nice menus. So even if we keep the cheaper option, like I would really want the intern to work on like. Just making things more accessible to the public. Um, they have checkers in here to make sure it's ADA compliant. Um, I have done plenty of, plenty of walkthroughs with both of these companies. Um, so Civic Plus is a little bit more expensive. They really are like, like government websites. They do thousands of these things. Um, so Cortez, Colorado, for example, um, same kind of premise. We've got like these nice little icons. Things are just like nice and clean and depending on how much information you have over there. Um, you know, you can build out each of, each of your little, little things. Um, and then most of them have this really nice built-in calendar where everything's, you know, popped up together. And their transition cost is about the same, seven, right around, you know, six, seven, seven hundred dollars, but theirs is three thousand dollars annually. And so what I'd like out of the three options, I want you to tell me which one you want to do with the considerations of, we do have interns coming in that can help get things moved over and set up. Website is probably the place where folks are getting most of their information from us most often. And we've got these added, um, stipulations that ADA compliance and ensuring that we are meeting. Um, all of those, um, regulations and laws annually. The templates are really nice. Um, because we don't have to go and create a WordPress as the WordPress users who have been in here, you know, that it's a little bit difficult. So questions, comments? What direction do you want me to go? And this will be like the final step to help me get to dot gov. Linda and then Britt, maybe?
I hate Civic Plus.
Okay. Strong dislike of Civic Plus.
They, we worked with them. Well. We paid them, actually. The only. Interaction that I really had with them is, um. At least once or twice or through ten months, trying to hit us up for training. We can help you train. We can help you do audits. I mean, they had all these products. They wanted us to buy and.
They're the same ones as like Muni Docs and Muni Code for everyone else. And Linda's right. They've got like a lot of different products.
And they didn't, we were paying, well, right now we're paying three hundred for something, which I think is good, but. We were paying three thou- but three thousand or fifty anyway. And. For nothing. They never interacted with us. It's anyway, so that's enough. And what's the option with Go? Go ahead, Britt.
No, just a couple of questions for you, Erin. So are all of the options for these services, uh, they're all set up for online pay?
Uh, no, so that's gonna be a separate bill. Bill pay is gonna be separate no matter what, and I'm working on that as well. Um, we will have the Express Bill Pay built into one of these systems, but it is separate.
Okay, cool. And then if you could just, uh, so we know, like if you need to update something or get something on the website. Like what's that process look for you now compared to what it would look like with these services?
Um, the templates are a lot easier to use, but I would say that once someone is like trained in each of them. The time to do it probably wouldn't be a whole lot different realistically. Um, I, I think really where we see a big difference in usability is on the front end. So the, the users of the website as opposed to the people who are uploading the content.
So what's the option with GoDaddy?
So GoDaddy would just be the domain. We just pay for the domain host, but then we still use WordPress as a free user. Um, I don't have the exact dollar cost, but it's gonna be like cheap, like a couple of dollars a month.
But they can host a dot gov?
They can host a dot gov and they're, the state is not able to recommend who to use, but that's kind of who they recommend. So.
So, so with, with these, uh, with these people that we're paying to do it, we still have to submit all of the data and everything else to, to be posted to be appropriate?
They, so they, they take all of our current data and move it and put it in the right categories. And then, and then, yes, then we would, would update it internally. They're not gonna continue to update it for us, but they would get. Everything moved over the first time. And then we would, then they are hosting it, for example, Revise would host it for a thousand dollars a month. Um, and then they do the domain plus just like they maintain the website.
So.
Accessibility.
What, what town can you show us that is done by GoDaddy?
And I'll go on record, I despise GoDaddy.
So sorry, so GoDaddy's only, they're just the host. They are just, they keep the domain for us. We. Yeah, they, they don't really do anything. We still use the WordPress site that we're using currently. It just moves over to be hosted by them as opposed to X mission.
Have we gotten a lot of complaints though? Because, because I go into our town site and I feel like it's, you know, not. It's not terrible. It's, you know, it's pretty user-friendly. I know that it's, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's the time and management to keep it up, I think. And I wonder if that's really gonna be cut down a lot if we still have to send all of this information over to somebody else to put it on.
So what if we do GoDaddy till while we have interns?
So what if we do GoDaddy till while we have interns and get it, get ours kind of worked through, and then if that still is problematic? Is it a lot? I mean, that's a whole nother chunk of money every year and.
No, I'm fine with that. I just, my hope would be if the interns are working to like get the website more accessible and usable, that we do just stick with that. But I definitely do not have the time to go revise our website again. But yeah, it would be my hope that maybe they could kind of bottle it off of these other things, knowing that WordPress is a little bit less user-friendly. But at least like they could help do the master menus and stuff that like everything drops down as opposed to hunting and picking where things are and having good physical kits.
Because they may have that, you know, they could between the, at least the two of them.
I just want to have realistic expectations of like what can be accomplished on WordPress versus what can be, like these templates really are plug-and-play. And, but that's my question for you is.
But is it worth the expense? Yeah, that's the question, I think. And I was just trying to look to see, because like that one thing kept zipping around and around. It's not on here now. I don't see it. It's the maps of the road project. It kept zipping and doing a fail.
You need to be speaking louder so we're sure we get you on the audio.
I didn't have that problem, but I definitely have people reach out. And I appreciate the public reaching out when things don't work, because I'm not a tech person, and I throw stuff up on our website all the time, so.
Okay, here, here it is, drawings. Let me just see if it does it on, on this, if it's, if that's the WordPress problem or if it's just my phone.
That is one of the things that I like about, about having the company that manages it, because we do, I mean, I know that making sure that things are going from computer to mobile sometimes can be awkward. And if you have somebody who knows what they're doing with that, that it's not. But I know on my own website development, it's like, oh, is this mobile-friendly? I have no idea.
Well, this shows up fine on the site. So I think the question is, is it worth another expense since we have interns? Like pay them to fix it up and see if it works after they're gone? And switch would be my thought. This one seems to have plenty of options between what you've done with it and what Linda did with it. There are lots of ways to, to do it, so they may, may be able to do quite a bit.
I would hate to put money into interns projects if we're, if we're going to switch at the end anyways.
Well, it's still migrate, all, all of it would still migrate over, which is pretty, unless you have, are you planning on them working on it, or do you have other stuff? Because if they're going to work on it, then I'd say we don't need to pay the seven hundred dollars to have somebody else do it.
And I've got other projects for them, but I do think that if we're happy with our homegrown one, we can continue on with it. It's sort of like a strong outcry of like, yeah, the public needs a better interface. We have options out there. Okay, cool. Thanks. I don't know if you need to vote on that. I will just take this direction and get the .gov done. Thank you for your time. That was my last thing.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on it, but.
Discussion.
Admin stuff.
Okay.
Um, number eight, discussion of emergency medical services. Do you want to?
Yeah. Um, so EMS appreciation week is not next week, but the week after. And that would be May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And I was feeling really bummed out when I was talking to Kathy, because she's like, we're kind of like planning our own stuff, and that doesn't feel very appreciative. So I was hoping that we could maybe put some money, funding, time, planning into a little thank you for what they do, because clearly it's a lot, and clearly the work is spread really like thin on what they do. And I was hoping maybe could get like a rough budget that we either can, you know, we didn't, they did not use much in terms of the fundraiser funds this year. So either we could pull from that or we could pull from admin, but do like a little dollar amount, and then, you know, if anyone has any ideas. They were kind of thinking maybe like a potluck as well as like having an open house over at the fire station where they could do like trainings of hands-on only CPR and things like that. So I was hoping that, you know, they can kind of pick the day, but maybe we can provide some of the food, or we can provide some gift certificates to local spots to just kind of tell them how much we appreciate them. So if you guys could like throw out a dollar amount and/or any other ideas of appreciation, we can run with that and get that done before two weeks from now.
When is the week?
It is May, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth.
I'm definitely in favor of potluck. If we could do it at the fire station, that's also the week of high school graduation, which is going to be a busy, it's going to be a busy community center week. You know this. But. Yeah, I definitely think we need to do something to recognize our, our EMS services. A dollar. I don't know what our, I don't know what our budget is in the EMS account right now.
Seventy or seven hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred, seven hundred and fifty, between like some kind of thank you gift and chipping in for some food and stuff. Not saying we'll use all of it, but somewhere in that range, I think, would be super doable.
If we did, um, some kind of catering, but then did potluck desserts.
But the community comes out with for potlucks.
Yeah, I think our potlucks, especially for EMS, I think that they would really show up maybe if we wanted.
You could make a theme or something if you wanted, but it was.
Or maybe we could provide some kind of dessert and have a thing. I, I don't, I don't know, a cake or something, and then, and then I would like to do some kind of gift certificate if we could for. For the EMS people.
Are there three of them?
Yeah, how many of you? Three now? Three, okay. I've seen all of our EMTs today.
And some of them in action.
Yeah, Kathy like ran out of the room to go help on a solo. So they are very appreciative, appreciated. Um, cool. Dollar now?
I'd say go up to the seven fifty, without what we're doing.
Perfect. We'll figure it out. It'll be great. I'll let you know next week what we're planning.
Okay.
Maybe our new intern can help too. Um, community engagement. Thank you.
Okay, number nine, discussion of spraying right-of-ways by San Juan County and citizen assistance on private property. First of all, private property, people should be doing what they need to do to clean up any goat heads, that kind of thing. And I was thinking maybe we could designate a day again for the community to do it, but it didn't work very well last time, so I dropped that idea. But the county is starting to look at their spray schedule, and I didn't know if we wanted to ask them to do some of the right-of-ways that are really bad. With goat heads where they're not, you know, there's really no private landowner. They'll start a Mexican hat. Probably if they didn't start this week, they'll start next week, I'd say.
For goat head mitigation, as a cyclist, I would love to see out the road up two sixty, well, maybe not this year with all the construction, but two sixty-two gets bad with goat heads. And also between one ninety-one turnoff in Santa Island is, is really bad with goat heads.
Well, why don't, why don't people just send me their ideas on what they want, and then that, that'll allow me to talk to the head of the weed department and get a sense as to when they're ready to start and what they're, what they're looking at on their own. But I think everybody could just shoot me an email, like this is an area I, I'd like to see it. I know sometimes a sentiment in town around people's properties and garden literally touches it, but there are some places that really need some work. And private owners shouldn't be getting out and doing their, you know, their own or hiring people, so.
Like the, the goat heads, it doesn't do any good to spray them now, because they're not really.
Well, whatever they spray for. I'm not, I'm not a, but getting out and doing, taking care of your own property is probably a good idea, but send me your ideas on spraying. Okay, number ten, discussion and vote on discipleship, Bluff Community Center on July seventh, twenty twenty-five for an overnight stay.
So we discussed this last week, last Thursday, and I provided as much information as I believe I have, and I haven't heard anything else from them since, because it was not on the agenda. It is on the agenda today to be discussed and voted on. In your packet, I did share the information again. It is a youth group coming through from LA to Denver, and they've requested to stay in the Bluff Community Center overnight.
I, I did see on that, that, you know, they go to community centers, they go to churches and stuff, and, and. I think my question about it is who do we charge? As I know, we charge for funerals for the locals. We don't charge for any five oh one C threes.
But they are five oh one, they are five oh one C three.
So, but we charge for our locals. You know, we've gotten at least rid of charging for people who provide classes. We used to charge those people. These are community centers that would teach classes, so got rid of that. But I think it's a little warped, because we charge our, our the local people that need a community center, but we don't charge the people that are just coming and going and from out of town that have budgets and things. It seems like if anybody's going to pay, those sorts should pay, and we should give the locals a, a discount for those kinds of things, like the funerals. The funerals have been piling up there lately.
Yeah, this can be a discussion for next week, because I do have the, a rec, or a proposal to update our community center and Fire Mason Kitchen membership contracts, because we are at a year. So that can be something that everyone thinks about, and then we can touch back on that next week at the work session.
I, you know, as far as like the exception to spend the night if they're in and out, that doesn't really bother me. If they're renting it, they're staying outside. I mean, they will in July, they'll be inside. And they're not doing drinking and whatnot, so there's no problem with the overnight. If wanted to rent a space, it'd be cheaper than if they rented a camp ground or, you know, rooms and stuff. Anyway, that's my issue with it. I love all these groups that have all these wonderful things, but who do we charge? Just the people that don't question it and don't ask for the discount?
So that, I mean, and that's a big, just a bigger discussion, because it touches on a lot of other policies we've decided. So I will move it to the work session and then to the meeting. I'm going to skip over number eleven, which is the update on the Bluff Cemetery public hearing and grant possibilities, other than to say that the public hearing for the cemeteries is next Monday. And I think it's at five thirty.
Correct. Monday, May twelfth at five thirty PM here at the community center, but we'll get the link going to.
And so.
We will.
So the, the question really is, how strongly does Bluff feel about taking over the, that part of Bluff Cemetery and becoming division of the, the, a department within the town where we have oversight versus the way that it's been not handled by San Juan County? And I have, at the request of Commissioner Mon, sent uh, the notice of public hearing to the fort. I will call my growing tomorrow.
When is the public hearing?
Monday.
It's Monday.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
So. The grant possibilities, I haven't finished working on the grant, and I'll bring that information sometime in May.
So Anne, quick question. So, so what, how is it, how is this defined? Is it just totally within the county, or is it like a special district, like district or something that, that currently?
Um, it's very convoluted. There are three entities that own land on Cemetery Hill. There's the Southwest Heritage, where the current burials are taking place. There's the Hole in the Rock Pioneer. Then there's a section that's the counties that not much happens in at all. Then there's a section that may be one half full of the rock, one half town. Veteran burials. So it's a little confusing. So it was surveyed by San Juan County when I finally got enough traction. So we have a survey as to which entity owns which spot. But the only question for the town is whether we want to bring that in as an official cemetery district department and take over the, um, the management, the operations of that. And it's easier, if anybody wants to look at the maps, the maps are here in the office. Now we have a couple of them. Yeah, I duplicated them, some of them laminated, but right now, the ownership pieces are kind of not, not the best laid out. And part of it is because the south, my opinion is Southwest Heritage did not completely, um, complete the conveyance of the land. So.
Do you have the survey, though?
Yes.
Okay, can you share that with us?
That's what I was planning on doing on Monday, getting it all out to everybody. At the public hearing, yeah.
It'd be nice to look at to see how that lined up on Monday.
It would be really nice. And in the real world, I would have time, but if somebody wants to come and get it and look at it, I don't have time right now until I get through.
It's not digital. It's a digital survey.
No, it's not digital, and it's big. I tried taking a photograph of it and it didn't work, but I have it. If anyone wants to look at it, then let me know, and I'll bring it to the office. But tomorrow is out for getting anything done for many reasons. I'll try to get to it Thursday or Friday to get it to everyone.
Essentially, it would be us taking over the special service district from the county, correct?
Yes.
Which, which is defunct right now, and we, which is never, yeah, which is, yeah, which is defunct, and.
And San Juan County is fine with that.
I'm going to say that one commissioner is fine with that. Mac McDonald is, at this point, yes, we should take it over. Until there's an actual vote by the commissioners, I will, I cannot guarantee anything, because I thought everybody was on the same page and gone and had it rejected, had things rejected. So right now, Laurie Mon is very supportive of doing something, because there's been zero oversight, zero transparency, no reporting to the state auditor on anything, and a burial in the wrong place. So I'm guessing Jamie Harvey from his comments is supportive. So he has doubts. I'm not sure of, but until we have a vote from the commission, and that's why I want the public hearing, so I can say the town wants it, rather than anecdotally, I've been told. And, and I'll try to get that out, Lou. It's just.
Yeah, Monday's fine. Wondered what sort of form it, they'd put it in.
I can drop my file off for you tomorrow, or I'll see you tomorrow. I'll just hand it off to you. And then you can look at it. And the maps are in Office Two.
Monday's fine. Monday, Monday works.
The maps are in Office Two, if anybody wants to look at the cemetery maps.
That's fine. I'll just look at them in there.
The survey's not there, so I'll get the survey over. Then number twelve, update, May first, planning and zoning, Lou.
Okay, so they had, planning and zoning had a meeting on May first. They had a big update, not a big update necessarily, but Kristen Bouchanel is the building department person that comes and gives them an update on what is going on. They, they discussed letters of violation. She's trying to figure out a, a letter of, you know, how that would look. They're talking about an appeals board. They need an educated panel to sit on that appeals board, so if somebody disagrees with what they say, they can go to an appeal. Moab in the last years has only had one, and at a meeting, Amanda Podmore had stated after she had studied up Moab that they have a policy of a carrot before the stick idea. So that may be why they don't have a lot. So that may be why they don't have a lot of, you know, problems with appeals of their decisions. They talked about conditional uses quite a bit. ADUs were discussed. The state only allows one ADU per lot. The state code does not allow anybody to live in an RV full time. Which is different than what the drafted RV ordinance shows. RV parks are two RVs or more. Design build Bluff campus was discussed quite a bit. It's changing hands and they, they want to have housing. For students and they're trying to work with zoning to see how that would work. Again, you're not supposed to live in, they're supposed to have facilities within them if you're living with them. Trying to figure out how that works into the RV ordinance and their zoning and so on, because they're in a residential zone there. Discuss renewable energy. Monticello Wind is done only under conditional uses, use permits. And San Juan County has, for residential, has no land use clearance and. No conditional use for their wind energy things. The fifteenth is their next meeting. One of the things on the next agenda is enforcement process, the plan for the ordinance. All the ordinance enforcement process for the ordinance is in place. And I believe that was all that was. But are there questions?
I don't have any. Shane, do you have any questions?
It is interesting to me to see the state codes and how we can fit into the state requirements of some of those that we've made other. Changes and how that will do a work. We talked about, you know, making zoning changes and whatnot, or making it a conditional use. Like for instance, if I embed block. Conditional use while it's them. So there's a lot kind of kicking around with them. Anything else moving that is on the list?
Thanks, Lou. All right, number 13, April financial report and both. So I sent out the year three as of April 30th financial report. Do you still have some moving pieces in there? However, it's just helpful for you all to keep an eye on the finances year date. And then I did send out the accounts payable report and. The only one I have in addition to this is one late payroll that I need to meet to get run. But other than that, the big one would be the transfer from PTIF to checking to cover some bills. Any questions, comments, concerns, and can I get a vote?
I didn't have any questions this time. Motion to pay the bills was presented.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then the Utah Office of Energy Development. There's Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Contract Approval from CCC, Malia.
So. The EECBG grant, the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. I worked through a couple of drafts with them and, and your agenda packet was draft free. It's the, basically the same contract that we received for the, the same agency for this building. And this is the one that we actually were first awarded $122,000 and. Six hundred, $122,616.16 or something. So that they've actually increased up to the full requested amount of 166,000, I believe. With that being the case, there weren't really any edits that I needed them to, to adjust because our. Project can't, we can say, we can do everything that we requested in our application, which they just copy and paste it into the contract.
So I'm, guess I was confused because I thought that grant was from this building.
So we received 26,000 from them for the community center to replace our lights. And then we received 166,000 from them for the CCC to do wall insulation, ceiling insulation and lighting replacement.
And we can hang on to that till we're ready to do those things?
Yeah, so the.
We can't really do it till you have the whole plan in place.
Right.
To know what you want to wear.
Right, which we should have by October.
So they'll hold it.
And so we, this period of performance is until December 31st of 2026. And 166,650 dollars.
Okay, so you, so you do have some time.
Yes. So I am requesting approval for Mayor Lebanon to sign the contract.
And I was also curious about your letters of support and stuff. Is that the one that wanted letters of support?
I don't think so. The one that we were just granted, so we just received an email last night that we received the. Oh man, who was that department?
Department of Natural Resources.
That was where all of our letters of support. We received a lot of letters of support and then we also just, yeah, the community project fund.
I bet it was a Kennedy one that. So that one is not this one.
Correct. Yeah, this one, we were awarded, they actually notified us in December of our award. And then it was on freeze for a while alongside our EPA and then in about, and I think it was like early March, they said, woo. Actually, they'd let us go. We're good. And so we've been, I've been going back and forth with them on these draft contracts instead. And you got to fill them out. Malia's raking in the dollars.
And so you need what to, what you need to sign it or you need to.
I motion that we approve the signature for receiving this government agency.
Second.
ECCBG. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Linda's not here. I guess she.
She stepped out. We've got four ayes. We're going with it. One of, one absent. Number 15, shipping services from Homadu, shipping at the. Cooperative Center after the fire mitigating weekend and reviewing vote. Then a discussion of charges to the public for pickup of chip material left community. Oh, left community center, building pain and fighter Mesa, ditching beans, stain. Okay, I'm turning this over to Malia. Much for me.
Yeah, this is a lot. So for the sake of time, I am very comfortable. None of this is pressing. I'm comfortable moving this to next week if you guys would like. Or, or I can go out and talk about it and you guys can begin discussing, but with this one being kind of a three part. I'm very happy to move this along to next week.
I'm going to take that as I'm moving.
Okay.
We'll move it to next, move it to next move. Thank you. Then. Number 16, discussion and vote on town of Bluff contract signature authority policy. Has everybody read that? Are there any questions about that? If there's no discussion, no questions, is there a motion?
My motion to accept the town of Bluff contract signature authority policy.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then discussion and vote on town Bluff credit card policy. Same question. Has everybody read it? Are there any questions, comments?
I don't know who wrote up the first one that I thought it was well done. And this one looks just fine too. This all looks pretty basic to credit card things that, but the first one I thought was quite well done.
Sweet motion to approve town of Bluff credit card policy.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Number 18 is discussion and vote on the use of the sign at the Cooperative Cultural Center.
So we got an email from the community liaison at the fort. Saying there's a sign close to the highway that was used at the old elementary school. Since it's not being used, we'd like to use it occasionally for the fort, primarily for Friday night night, Friday night at the fort and other free events. Can you bring this up at the town council meeting? Originally, I was like, let them cut it down and take it, but turns out that is probably too many signs on their lot based on our sign ordinance. Knowing that we were hoping to get rid of that sign anyway, I just, I don't know which direction you want to go with this, but. I know we had talked about getting it taken down, like the DRC a year and a half ago, wanted to take that sign down.
So they're asking to use it in place just to say what's happening until we have a system, somebody using ours.
We don't have to turn the lights on on it, right? Can't remember if it's lit.
It's a lit up.
Shouldn't it start at the DRC? Kick it to the DRC. And I think just because that's, we're, you're still needing to have a DRC meeting that.
I would, I would also say that it doesn't just, until we resolve an issue, it doesn't necessarily just involve. Our, our town DRC, so.
That, yeah, that's what I'm thinking is probably making any decision and then. Yeah, I think probably kicking it for a discussion and then bringing it back. I think.
It seems like, well, it's not.
And I don't know where we, when we get to the construction phase, I think that's something else we need to think about. It's like where else do signs have to go? Those big signs on the fence and all that. So maybe it's a good idea to get it moved out of there. I don't know, but let's start with the DRC to kind of tie it all up.
In the meantime, yeah.
So number 19. Lou Anna wondered if we should be taking a report on business owners. And I just moved it on here for a point of discussion. I don't, you know, that got me to thinking about like what, what do we do reports on mostly? We do them on committees. We're involved in. Through the government. But there are things that happen in the fobs. It's really helpful. So I'm just opening it up. Do we want to start having, you know, a regular report when they have a meeting and if so, who would want to take responsibility for that?
Well, I think that since we are, since we do have a line item budget. Section, I, I think it might be nice to at least get all for it on. Spends maybe? I, I don't, I don't know. I also know that business owners of Bluff, although we try to be more, we are trying to be more regular with our meetings, they sometimes are very. Not regularly scheduled.
Well, personally, I don't really care to know what they spend it on because I trust that. You know, they, and I just don't need a lot of details. A lot of this, like this last meeting, a lot of it dovetails into what we're doing as a town and they're. I mean, without the businesses, we don't have any funding to run the town. So that's, I don't know. It's, to me, it's like waterworks and the county. Economic level and all of them. It seems like it would be nice to keep us all in the loop, but.
I'm not opposed to it. It's just.
Who's going to take responsibility for going, you know, meeting and I'll make the report.
Well, between Dan and I, usually one of us are there.
And as well.
Yeah, and Erin, Erin is there.
It would be helpful to improve the communications between the business owners and the town. I think that really often that, you know. We're losing oversight into what they really care about until it's like in our face and we're having to deal with it. And from an educational standpoint. And we have plenty of things that, you know, if we can improve that relationship, I think it would really benefit both entities.
I would just say careful about which hat you're wearing in the meeting. Then if they're going to be reporting back officially to us and you're sitting there, just, you know. Careful. And not to derail their stuff, you know, if it's like a town person sitting there in that capacity and then gets the, the grousing or whatever about this or that. So just careful.
Yeah, in some ways it would be really nice not to have a business owner who also sits here because we very often get thrown into that position. And it, it's really uncomfortable. Like I'm paying to be a business owner. I'm not paying to be the town manager who's saying their thing at that for me.
So it could be Diana or something like that. They could come and present after meetings and gives a summary or something.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of the people who regularly attend who would be willing to do that. I don't know if we need to drop another thing on Diana's plate. Pam is also very overwhelmed. Diana might. I, I don't know. We could, we could ask.
Yeah, why don't we just leave it at, it can be a line item. Somebody has to tell me to put it on the agenda because you had an impromptu meeting that I didn't know about and. Who's going to report on it?
Uh, just one update on that was the, the tax is going up, a state mandated tax and the county opted to do a quarter percent. To me, that's relevant to all of us here because it, it does add more.
Especially when we still haven't been notified by this.
Yeah, and it's supposed to go in, well, I think it did today. But I think we got something today, but July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st.
It bumps another percent. And then with our resort tax too, it'll make it 14.2% on every room in the, in the town. Forty seven, and the county decided to do the point two five add on and, and so they get 47% to promote tourism. And 53% to mediate. Uh, the impacts of, you know, the fire EMS, the rescue, all of that sort of thing that, that comes because of tourism. But anyway, but I have a little update here if you'd like to hear it.
No, I. They were talking about the one they have to do the resolution on. Is that Aaron the same thing? Because if. There is a tax that.
I don't know if it was like. It was like EMS specific, right? It was, yeah, it was a TRT, it was a TRT resolution.
At the county level.
That's probably, that's probably the quarter, quarter of the 1% raise. The way that, the way that Allison presented it was that it will be going into mitigation. It will not be, it will not be used for promotion. It's so, it probably is how they're going to spend that quarter percent.
Yeah, there's, if there, well, yeah, I have no idea what the status is. There's one they haven't done the resolution on, one of these increases, but.
And the state wanted to do 4%. The Utah Hotel Motel Association really squashed it down to 1%. They said we'd lose way too many visitors by adding that much when they have the option to go. Lots of places to go, so.
Doesn't charge 20% tax?
It's, are there any other others?
Uh, I just wanted to bring it, well, we had a. What would you call it? The, the bid, people opened the bid, the bidders for the, the two road projects, the seventh and the. Accrung Cow Canyon, Cap Canyon. Uh, nobody turned up the bid, uh, but they have till the 15th, I think.
Right.
So they, nobody came to look at it. Like when they did the old school, they, you know, people came, nobody came. So there's not much to say on that one. Um, until later. Um, and then there's new, the roads, uh, the old highway is on the agenda for next week. And if you Google availability of federal funding. Uh, availability of federal funding, um, for. Highways and, and roadways that do not include, uh, pedestrian and bicycle consideration. You'll see that we would be cut out of all federal funding if we don't put that into our plan. Um, I was talking to the engineer that runs San Juan County, New Mexico, which is Farmington, Aztec, that whole county. Uh, and he was the one that alerted me to it and I did a quick Google search of. What happens if you don't consider bicycles and pedestrians in, in your road, uh, road grants and you're just cut out of all of it. So just a little bit of new information before we meet on it next week. Do a little billing, but there's a lot of zero fatality, um, safe streets for all, it's for all users, all those sorts of things are tied up in the federal funding.
All right, it is.
Oh, you have one? Are we being reimbursed for insurance EMS funding? Or branding?
I have not pursued, reached out to her at this point.
Is there, she no longer.
Well, she's moving.
And she, but she's not responding until she moves or is she still, is she respond, does she respond? And that's the problem with. Recruiting people and so they'll actually show up. So thank you, Malia, for showing up.
And thank you to Kathy and Beth. They both rushed out of the meeting at San Juan County today.
And that's what, that's what happens is the businesses have to allow them to go and you have to be able to work and whatnot, but it's, it's a tough job, but it's, we need them.
Did you know it wasn't until 2022 that Utah declared EMS an essential service? Okay, it's 6:13 PM.
That's why we take it with him.
Thank y'all for being patient with me being sick and steering clear of y'all. Um, motion to adjourn.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
Y'all look great though, Brett. Just hang in there. Thanks for coming.
Yep. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye, aye. Thank you. I'm turning off.